The September fourteenth, twenty seventeen Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend Travis Tinson, pastor of the historic Saint Mark's CME Church in Longview. This church recently celebrated one hundred and fifty years of service. Reverend Tinson, please rise.
Let us bow. Gracious God, our Father, from whom all blessings flow, we come before you today in humble submission and with sincere hearts, thank you for your grace and your mercy you have shown towards us. We take this time to pray a special prayer for those who have suffered loss of property and families who lost loved ones due to the recent hurricanes, Harvey and Irma. We realize we are our brother's keepers. In times like these, we pull together to make a difference. We ask that you would restore every person, every city, state, and county, and country affected by these storms. We pray for our mayor, Dr. Andy Mack, the city manager, the council members, grant them the knowledge and wisdom to help the city of Longview be among the best cities in the state of Texas and our nation. Bless our police and sheriff departments, who do their best for us to live in a safe, positive, and productive society. Please, Lord, lower our crime rate, homicides, drug trafficking, and gang violence. These are many blessings we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you assist us in the pledge allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the true flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Travis, I want to thank you for coming here tonight. I don't know how many of y'all know Mr. Tinson, but he was an amazing football player when he was in high school, but he's even more amazing pastor now for the city of Longview and for Saint Marks. We really enjoyed your celebration a few weeks ago. We congratulate your church on that amazing accomplishment. Thank you, sir. Tonight in employee recognition, we're going to recognize Captain Ben Harrison, a twenty-one year veteran of the Longview Fire Department, recently completed the National Fire Academy's Managing Officer Program in Emmitsburg, Maryland. He's the first member of the Longview Fire Department to complete this degree of training. This program is a multi-year curriculum that includes emergency, emerging emergency service leaders to personnel and professional skills in change management, risk reduction, and adaptive leadership. Acceptance into the program is based upon a competitive application process that requires the selected participants to have accomplished specific training, experience, and academic requirements for consideration. As a capstone for the program, the participant is required to implement some degree of change within the department's operation and culture. For his project, he selected to implement a training program for the entire department to improve its operational readiness for response to a high-rise fire. The title of his capstone was "Enhancing the Safety and Effectiveness of High-Rise, Multi-Rise Tactics in the Longview Fire Department." This sort of scenario in real life would pose many challenges for the fire department and its historically lax experience with the fire above the second floor of a structure. Captain Harrison's development of this program led directly to the department's modifying and improving its firefighter equipment capabilities, as well as better understanding the specialized strategies and tactics required for a successful approach to a high-rise fire incident. Captain Harrison, please come forward.
And we present this to you as National Fire Academy recognition for your accomplishment. And you all called that I said this is the first one to do this in our city, and we appreciate your dedication, your drive, and the ability to make a difference in how we perceive threats that could potentially happen in our community, because we have more than two-story buildings in Longview. So, this potential is real, and so what you've done is to enhance our ability to combat this, if it were to ever take place, and we appreciate the dedication you've given towards that and that great, great capstone that you did for us. So, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Pleasure. Thank you very much.
Come on up. Get closer. Hold on, hold on, hold on. You can get with him, I'll take off.
Once again, I'll say it over and over, we're the best public safety in all of Texas, police and fire. Thank you, sir. Tonight, in my community recognition, I'm going to recognize a really special person from our community, Billy Joe Peanut Brittle Shaddix. Bill Shaddix of Longview, Texas, passed away peacefully on August the thirtieth, twenty seventeen, after a brief illness with a brain cancer. He was eighty-four years of age. Bill was born in February twenty-sixth, nineteen thirty-three, in Pittsburgh, Texas, to Burton and Clovis Shaddix. He grew up in Ebenezer Community, Texas, and graduated from Pittsburgh High School in nineteen forty-nine. After graduating at the tender age of sixteen, he worked for the local sawmill, then joined the army and learned the skilled craft of welding while serving for three years during the Korean War. Upon honorable discharge, Bill worked all over the United States as a cross-country pipeline welder for the oil and gas industry for Brown and Root Industrial Services. He was based out of New Orleans, Louisiana. It was there that he met the love of his life, Sandra Jean Dennis. Bill and Sandra married in December of sixty-eight and had two girls, Sean and Shelley. And I believe y'all are here, right? Good to see you. They resided in Spring Hill and were happily married for forty-seven years. Bill retired in nineteen ninety-two, and in his words, he became domesticated. His many hobbies included gardening, golf, fishing, and spending time in his lake house on Lake of the Pines, cooking, helping Sandra with her home babysitting businesses, and watching his beloved Cowboys and Texas Rangers. All these hobbies were eclipsed when Bill saw a microwave peanut brittle recipe in the local paper. He tweaked and experimented to perfect his own secret recipe, and he became Peanut Brittle Bill. And he saw potential customer in everyone that he met, including me. The current achievement of Bill's brittle was being featured in the story on CBS nineteen, KYTX, morning show just this past July. We have a little clip from that if you'll watch.
Hidden away in the Longview neighborhoods is the Arabella Senior Community. Take a step inside, and the first thing you will notice is the sweet aroma of peanut brittle. Bill Shaddix, or also known as Peanut Brittle Extraordinaire, was born and raised in Pittsburgh, Texas. Shaddix had a long career traveling all over the world doing cross-country pipeline. At the young age of fifty-five, he decided it was time to take a step back and enjoy life. But it wasn't long until he began perfecting a recipe for peanut brittle that keeps people coming back for more. What made you get into starting to make peanut brittle?
Okay. My mother used to make stove top brittle. And she was down there, stir, 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 listen for the peanuts start popping open, that sort of thing. I saw a recipe in the paper, Longview paper, for microwave peanut brittle. So, I decided I was going to try it. And I got all the ingredients I needed and tried it. It didn't work. It didn't work for me. I burned candy, undercooked candy, and everything. So, I started tweaking the recipe, changing the cooking ingredients, changing the ingredients, the cooking time, and so forth. And I finally, I finally think I've got pretty close to what my mother used to taste like. And I think it's pretty good there.
So, how long have you been making this peanut brittle?
Well, I can't, can't remember the number of years, but it's been quite a while.
That's Peanut Brittle Bill. His charming outgoing personality, as well as his delicious peanut brittle will be greatly missed in Longview. Shelley, come on up, y'all. Family members, come on up. Shelley is Bill's daughter, and Shelley, I can just tell you this. Mr. Bill, if you ask him anything, he will say, "All I want to hear is the first sound that someone makes when they bite into that peanut brittle." Isn't that what he said?
Yes.
All he wants to hear is that first sound, because it's always, "Mmm." It's amazing. And he'd make his peanut brittle in all different shapes, Mickey Mouse, State of Texas, whatever you want. He would supply them with it every year. I couldn't wait for Bill to come and give me my peanut brittle. No, not give me, buy my peanut, buy the peanut brittle, because he was a businessman, and he was really good at it. But we're going to miss Bill. He was a wonderful guy. He was the heart of Arabella. People loved him over there. He's been the heart of our community. He's been a servant to our community, and he deserves the recognition, but you all deserve it. We're going to miss him. We thank the world out of him.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Just tell me, someone has the recipe. All we need to know. Okay. Peanut brittle, Shelley. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
What a wonderful man he was. We are now to citizen comment. I have some speaker cards. I'm going to save some of them until we have our items on the agenda, but I do have one, Ms. Marie Edwards.
Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
Mr. Andy Mack. To this distinct council people, you know who you are, and the guy that managed my money, David Willard, thank you so very much, and my friends here to my right, my friends. Are you the... You also. Okay, now, now, this is why I am here, reflecting over the last weeks with the hurricanes, flooding, and other disarray. I am so proud to be an American. Why? Americans know how to survive. I refuse to name groups. Why? Because naming groups divide. My fellow Americans, it is now time to stand together as a people. Remember, united we stand, divided we fall. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Marie. We appreciate you. I have no other speaker cards for citizen comment, not related to an action or an item. Anyone else like to speak and fill out a card later? Very well, move on. Public safety update.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard. Last week, we had, last Tuesday night, we had our National Night Out kickoff party, and what a great success that was. We had over three hundred and fifty attendees at the party. We had food and door prizes and a time to come together and also give the residents an opportunity to begin the registration process for their National Night Out parties. Just last week, at the National Night Out kickoff party, we registered sixty-two parties at this event. As of this morning, when I made the slide, we had ninety-six registered, but that has since gone up to a hundred since the end of the day today. So, we currently have a hundred parties registered. I'd like to remind everybody and those that haven't registered yet, or those that may want to register a party, National Night Out is coming up Tuesday, October third, and they can go to longviewtexas.gov backslash NNO to register your party. We'd love for every neighborhood to have a National Night Out party. Also coming up on Monday, September twenty-fifth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM, we'll be having a police explorer open house. This is open to any youth age eleven to twenty-one that might be interested in exploring and police work and how police departments operate. They can come in, we'll have some presentations and provide them some information on how they can become an explorer and join the explorer group. We also encourage the parents, if they're interested, to come along with their children as well. Every year for the last six years, during the week of nine-eleven, the police and the fire have come together. There's a time of fellowship during that week, and they have a golf tournament together that they participate in. This year, our local police and fire department come together and had a golf tournament kind of fellowship. I'm all right. The events of nine-eleven. And you know how we have been in the past as far as golf goes with the police department. But this year, after six years of losing the cup to the, to the fire department, I can say that our officers reclaimed the coveted trophy this year. So, I want to congratulate the officers and everybody that come together that day to play. It's always a good time when, when the public safety officers get together and spend time together and fellowship. Also last week, we had the opportunity and an invitation from the Dallas Cowboys to send six of our officers up to the Cowboys-Giants game to participate in the opening national anthem and events, and we had six officers that went up that represented the police department and represented our city in those events as well. And I'd like to thank those officers that participated in those events. They were Officer Brizendine, Officer Hampton, Officer Farmer, Officer Lusk, Officer Degarmo, and Officer Lloyd. So, I want to thank them for taking their time and representing us. And also, last week, I had the honor and the privilege of presenting one of our department's lifesaving awards to Officer Ryan Smith. This award stems from an April automobile accident where he was the first one to arrive on scene. One of the drivers of the vehicle was in cardiac arrest. He began immediately providing CPR and first aid, and that was critical to the survival of that patient that was involved in that accident. So, I want to congratulate Officer Ryan Smith for a job well done. Officer Ryan Smith just recently left the police department, but the good news is he went over to the fire department. So, he's still here with the, with the city. Want to congratulate him on his award, but also congratulate him on his transfer to the fire department, and we wish him well over there.
Is he that good of a golfer, chief?
I don't know. Did he putt? Any questions?
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Stillman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on some things that have happened in the fire department since our last meeting. First and foremost, the state of Texas is still, has shifted into the recovery mode from Hurricane Harvey. We, at the height of this event, had sixteen people deployed from the city of Longview, that's employees and a few volunteers. And I'm proud to say that as of today, and I actually had to update this slide after I'd sent it in, that those two employees that were deployed down to Hardin County have returned today, late this afternoon. So, we just have the one deploy that's still out. He's working in the State Operations Center down in Austin. And I just want to thank you for allowing us to send these trained personnel down to lend a hand. You know, not only do they carry that expertise with them, but they represent the city extremely well, and they also have that knowledge that they bring back here at home that they gain from those deployments that help us here when we have local disasters and emergencies. So, I appreciate your support of these programs. Our department is at one hundred percent again. We've carried about eleven openings for quite some time. It took us a pretty extensive amount of time to do our hiring process, and I'm proud to say that in the last couple of weeks, we've been able to hire and replace all of these people. So, I've got a group of them here, Brandon Ayers, Cody Corn, Cody Edwards, Marcus Haney, Jordan Lindell, Todd Orndorf, Jacob Parton, and Brian Fowle, that joined our ranks, and they're going through their process of a four-week orientation program right now. And also joining them in the future will be, these are, these are three of our apprentices, Jason Frey, Ryan Smith, and Dustin Brundridge, who started the Kilgore College Fire Academy on Monday. So, the end of that, they will go through the same orientation and get us back up to full strength. Code Red, I keep talking about it. I'm going to keep talking about it because apparently it's paying off. Every time I do this report, what the numbers are showing is that we're picking up about a hundred new phone registrants a week. And I'm going to keep preaching it because we still have some gaps to close. We're not even halfway to where we should be for a city our size. So, Code Red is a free service at our city office. Please reach out, call two-three-seven-eleven-seventy to get more information, or you can register online. But make sure that you get that critical information about impending disasters that are about to hit our city and affect our way a lot. As we, as Chief Bishop mentioned, this was the week of nine-eleven. We take pause. We, we remember the sacrifices of public safety all across the country and throughout the world. Just a quick shout-out to Brookdale Longview First United Methodist Church, Highland Pines, and Saint Matthews Catholic Church, who all did specific programs to honor fire and police and EMS agencies. I got to participate with a handful of these, and I know there's probably a ton of others that I'm leaving out. So, I just want to thank, it is, it is so wonderful to live in a community with such support of its public safety personnel, and I appreciate that. And yeah, as Chief Bishop mentioned, they, and I do have to clarify one thing, just a point of clarification, they didn't reclaim the trophy. They actually won it for the first time. So, I just want to get that out there. And I'm actually, I'm happy for them. He needs, he needs some bling in his office, so that trophy will look good in there for the next year, but now that we've got one of his better golfers, we'll work hard to get it back next year. And I did include that same scorecard on my slide. I just did it a whole lot smaller than he did. So, I just want to point that out. But it was a great, it was a great day of fun. It, it was a great day of fun and camaraderie, and we always, we always have a great time getting out with our brothers in blue and sharing some fellowship and playing a good round of golf. So, we had a great time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Stillman? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just think we should, during the meeting after these two guys talk, it's just the greatest. Thank y'all so much. We're going to send agenda. Anyone have anything off the agenda they'd like to pull off for a separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, to a budget, I'd consider an ordinance adopting twenty-seventeen tax rate, levying said tax rate. Ms. Cohen.
Good evening. This is a vote to set the FY seventeen-eighteen property tax rate. The rate to be set is thirty-eight point seven, seventy-six cents for maintenance and operations, twelve point twenty-three cents for debt service, totaling fifty point nine-nine cents. This is not an increase to the rate over the prior year and does not exceed the effective rate. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Cohen? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Now, to zoning, public hearing will be held to consider S seventeen dash zero four. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The public hearing will be held to consider application S seventeen oh four filed by Liberty Baptist Church of Longview, Texas, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district for approximately one point eight-eight-two acres of Lot Two, Block One, Liberty Baptist Church, located at fifteen-hundred West Loop two-eight-one. The applicant is applying for a specific use permit for a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. As you can see in the zoning map, a majority of this property is actually zoned light commercial, which would allow for a drive-through window, but a small portion is zoned general retail. According to the applicant, a one-hundred-foot drain easement will be dedicated along the rear property line, where it's adjacent to the residential neighborhood. The applicant has agreed to maintain a fifty-foot natural buffer that will be undisturbed, along with an eight-foot tall wooden fence along the property line. Within that one-hundred-foot easement, no buildings, no parking, and no lighting will be allowed. The developer will try to preserve as many trees as possible within the hundred-foot easement, and through the development process, the developer will meet all City of Longview codes. West Loop two-eight-one is a principal arterial roadway, which is appropriate for this type of use. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding zoning. Staff, along with planning and zoning, do recommend approval of this request with the stipulation that an eight-foot tall, solid wood fence be placed along the property line, maintenance of a hundred-foot easement along the rear property, where no buildings, parking, or lighting will be allowed within that one-hundred-foot easement, and where as many trees as possible will be preserved, and a maintenance of a fifty-foot natural undisturbed buffer in the rear of the property adjacent to residential. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
It says require public hearing, which is now open. Are any speakers on this public hearing? Ms. Choi, with the stipulations that planning and zoning is recommended, is the, is the developer, the applicant, in accordance with this, in agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Much motion.
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing for Z seventeen dash zero six. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agricultural zoning district to office zoning district. McCann Road is designated as Collector Road, which is appropriate for this type of use. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is appropriate and is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I have a speaker card from Leslie Elmore.
I'm requesting a rezoning of this property to coincide with the surrounding property, and I'll answer any questions that you have on it.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers for this public hearing? Any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Public hearing for annexation of approximately forty point six-four-eight acres of land in the ETJ on Tryon Road and Hollybrook. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, the first public hearing to be held to consider a proposed annexation of approximately forty point six-four-eight acres of land bounded by Tryon Road and Hollybrook Drive, located north of East Loop two-eight-one in Gregg County. As you can see here on the map, the staff, staff did receive a request for annexation. This area is within our ETJ. Earlier this year, council authorized staff to enter into a three-eighty agreement with the developer to extend an eight-inch sewer line to this property. As part of this agreement, the developer has agreed to request annexation and to construct a rehabilitation hospital containing, at a minimum, thirty thousand square foot and at least thirty hospital beds or patient beds. This is the first of two required public hearings on this matter. Final action will be October the nineteenth, twenty-seventeen. The second public hearing will be September the twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen. As part of this annexation, a service plan has been prepared by staff. All basic services, such as sanitation, police, fire, and EMS, will be provided at the date of annexation. No roadways will be included in this annexation. Capital improvements will include sewer, as I said before, and an eight-inch sewer line will be extended to the property at a total cost of two-hundred-thirty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, which does include the construction of the sewer line main, along with the engineering and surveying cost. In May of this year, a contractor, a contract was awarded to WM Miller Construction Company of Longview, Texas, to construct that sewer main. The property already has access to city water, and that is it with my service plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions at that time, at this time.
This requires a public hearing is now open. Any speakers? Any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing to consider a request filed by LSD to abandon a portion of sixty-foot-wide street right-of-way known as Whittaker Drive. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting to abandon a portion of Whittaker Drive and a small portion of Tracy Drive, located west of High Street between Garfield and Tracy. Currently, Ware Elementary sits on top of this right-of-way of Whittaker and Tracy. All utilities were relocated at the time the school was built. In nineteen seventy-two, the city of Longview and LISD entered into an agreement to allow for the city to build park facilities on property actually owned by LISD. If you can see here in this exhibit, what's in the hatched green. When the school district decided to rebuild Ware Elementary, they wanted to build on top of Whittaker Drive, so the city and LISD entered into an agreement to exchange property. In return for the right-of-way that, of Whittaker Drive, LISD will deed over the land along Guthrie Creek to the city. Staff does recommend approval of this request, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Any speakers? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion on the Whittaker Drive right-of-way?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have a public hearing to consider the request by LSD to abandon the right-of-way on Tracy Drive, which Ms. Choi already alluded to. So, public hearing is required. Public hearing is now open. Any speakers? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We're now to action items, consider an ordinance submitting Chapter 67, outdoor venues and solicitations in order to allow mobile food units to operate within the city at certain locations. Michael Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard. As stated, this is a proposed amendment to the vendor and solicitor ordinance to allow some potential revisions for the mobile food units or the food trucks. As you may remember, in February of 2016, council approved the ordinance to allow mobile food units in the City of Longview. Since that time, staff has received a petition from members of the community asking for the rules for use of downtown right-of-way to be allowed. It's currently they have to be on private property only or in the city parking lots there on Cotton Street as you can see in red. And so, through this process, once we received the petition, staff started evaluating down the downtown grid to determine if and where and how it would be appropriate and what that would look like. Through that review process, and in coordination with the traffic engineer, we have determined the areas that you can see kind of in the yellowy gold-orange on the map are areas that were determined on North Center Street and Ferdonia Street there kind of between the railroad right-of-way and the alleyway as areas that would be available or appropriate for what we're calling off-peak hours. And so, the proposal before you is to allow for two different types of use, what we're calling peak and off-peak. The peak hours are going to be your normal, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and then your off-peak are going to be after 5 o'clock and then all day Saturday and Sunday. And so, through the evaluation process, most of the demand for the off-peak is, you know, they're on Center Street adjacent to the Silver Grizzly and to the brewery there. And so, we felt that this would be minimal impact, wouldn't necessarily impact any of our brick-and-mortar restaurants directly for the off-peak hours. For the peak hours, we felt like they're around Heritage Plaza with all the success that we had with the Food Truck Friday last week, that having a venue downtown for, you know, breakfast or lunch would be appropriate, and what better place than at a city facility? And so, what we're recommending to consider is they're on the Green Street side to allow for that peak hour opportunity. And this is just an initial recommendation, doesn't seem to pose any problems from a traffic standpoint, doesn't seem to have any kind of conflict with any kind of businesses in a sense, and so, we just want to recommend you, recommend you tonight that this is an appropriate opportunity and take comment on that.
Any questions of Mr. Shirley? But before we do, I do have two speaker cards on this, I'd like to have a chance to speak, okay? Jack Buttram, Buttram?
I am Jack Buttram, I'm co-owner of Oil Horse Brewing Company, so one of the businesses that'll be directly impacted by this, and I just want to voice my support for it. We've seen throughout the last year, as specifically Rolling Hunger's been able to park nearby, our customers really want that. We only serve the beer that we brew there in the brewery, and we really want to encourage downtown experience. And so, we're part of that, Silver Grizzly's part of that, Hick and Frog's part of that, Bon Tims is part of that. You know, there are a lot of people that are part of that, but what our customers are looking for is variety. And so, I have people come to me a lot asking, what's, what can I, you know, where can I go eat within walking distance? And there may be three or four options, four at most, depending on the hours. So, I think this would open it up, at least for our business, a lot. Our customers are really looking for that. And one thing we really, we really strive for at the brewery is really trying to build community, and I think food trucks fit into that just perfectly. If you watch them like last week at Food Truck Fridays, they, they are competitors, but they're all working towards a common goal, which is building community in downtown. And so, that's, that's what we want to see, and we are fully in support of it and ask you to also.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Gary Ford.
Thank you, council people, and happy birthday, Kristen.
Thank you.
I'm here as chairman of the 100 Acres of Heritage and as, as one of the people behind the petition that Mr. Shirley mentioned, just wanted to reiterate our support of this, of the recommendation that Developmental Services has, has made. I believe the success of last week's Food Truck Friday is a clear indication that downtown is in support of more food trucks and more opportunities for food trucks, and I think that just further aligns with the comprehensive plan and the, and the support of growing downtown. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any other speakers on this, on this issue? I, I know that just from watching how Downtown Live has grown over the last year and have the food trucks available this year, it's been amazing to see that progress, and it's been very encouraging to see the growth and development that could take place down there. Any questions from council?
I have a comment. I just wanted to commend those who brought the petition forward, 100 Acres of Heritage and staff, because we're moving in the right direction. This is very progressive, traveling a lot as I do. There are not any communities hardly now our size that don't allow food trucks, so I'm grateful. This is going to increase the numbers of people that come downtown now, and you know, I just would like to encourage the community as we move ahead, let's expand our minds, because I remember this process when Councilman Moore started and with the task force, and there were some challenges, and all along, I knew we'd get there. And so, for the food truck vendors, I hope that we continue to expand, because I think there were like, what, 800 people or more downtown on food truck fighting? So this is great for our community, and thank you.
Any other comments?
Yep.
Mr. Wright.
Michael, the boxes in red are already approved for anytime use?
Yes, the city parking lots are already allowed to be used during any time.
Well, what do you do when somebody wants to rent those areas first?
The, as far as the parking lots are concerned, I believe the event rental is, comes first. The way we've enacted the ordinance for around Heritage, if there, if Heritage is rented out for an event, then that would come first. So we would not allow the food trucks to interfere with the parked area rental.
Sort of the food trucks have to get approval when they want to park there?
Yes. The, the area for the, the peak hours, that they kind of sign up for ahead of time. It is first-come, first-served basis though, because they're first and foremost parking spaces, but hopefully over time, people kind of yield to the food trucks, if you will. But then we'll be in coordination with the Parks Department, if they have it rented out during the week, then, then that would come first. And that's one of the reasons we're not allowing that area around Heritage to be used on the weekend, because it's typically rented out.
Any other comments?
Just a brief one, I think if we approve this, this is, this is going to be a win for our growing food truck industry, and certainly, I think, a win for our small-area downtown plan in our effort to revitalize and bring people downtown as a destination. So, I'm certainly in favor of it.
Then is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now out of community interest. We will start tonight, little out of order. Mr. Willard, we'll start with you tonight.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read this. Tonight, I'm announcing that I'm retiring as city manager for the City of Longview. My last day of work will be December 29th. I've been so blessed to have had the opportunity to be the city manager for over 10 years, but after 15 years in the private sector and 28 years in the public sector, it's time for Cindy and I to move on to the next adventure. There are so many people who have helped me lead this organization, and in the next few months, I hope to be able to thank them personally for their contributions to my career here in Longview. Tonight, though, I want to thank the council who provided me the opportunity to be the city manager in Longview. Mayor Jay Dean, council member Sidney Allen, John Bolster, Wayne Frost, the late Sidney Bell Willis, Daryl Williams, and John Sims. I've also had the privilege to work for council members Richard Manley and Gary Smith as well. To each of you, I owe a debt of gratitude, and thank you. To Mayor Andy Mack, thank you for allowing me to continue my career under your administration. From the very first day after your election, you have been absolutely 100% supportive of me and the work I've tried to accomplish here as the city manager. I appreciate your passion and commitment to our community, and under your leader, continued leadership, I see nothing but great things ahead for Longview. To Steve, David, Kristen, Cash, and Nona, and Ed, thank you so much for the support each of you has shown to me. This city is blessed to have a mayor and council that is unified in its desire to make Longview a better place to live. I am humbled to have had the privilege to work with so many fine people who come to work every day for the City of Longview. I especially want to thank my executive team, Assistant City Manager Keith Bonds, Public Works Director Roland McPhee, Director of Administration Mary Ann Miller, Finance Director Angela Cohen, Parks and Rec Director Scott Karen, Director of Community Services Laura Hill, Director of Development Services Michael Shirley, Fire Chief JP Stillman, and Police Chief Mike Bishop, City Attorney Jim Finley, and City Secretary Shelly Ballinger. I also want to thank Sean Hara and our Office Manager Angie Shepard for all that they've done to support me and, and help me every day. Each of these people have a special place in my heart, and without them, I could not have accomplished anything. Finally, I want to rec-
Big Tim.
I'll try not to do this. Cindy?
Do you want me to breathe it?
I do. That helps.
I know this, I want you to come up here. Come on up.
Come here.
Come on up here.
Come on.
Come up here.
We have a new mayor. Anyway, I want to recognize Cindy, for 43 years, nearly 44, in March, she has supported me without question. She has sacrificed many things in order for me to pursue a career. She's been the best mother and, and wife and supporter anybody could ever have, and I thank you. Again, thank you for the opportunity I've had to serve here, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
David, I've known you ever since you've been here. I, I am a former city manager myself, and frankly, the, I've come to know you and, and consider you a friend, and I've admired your administrative abilities, your personality, your ability to get along with people. You have been an excellent leader for this community, and the fact, as a city manager, you blasted in one place in 10 years, for 10 years, is a testament to your skills, and I'm going to miss you. We're all going to miss you.
Thank you.
Ms. Snoddy.
I would just like to say good luck to you, David. You're going to greatly, we're going to miss you greatly. Thank you for all the service that, that you have provided, and smart guy, getting out while you're young enough to still. Also, I know that we have all done our part to help support those who have been impacted by the hurricane, and, and thank you guys, I mean, as a city and as a community, I know we've done our part. Thank you for your contribution, contributions, and with that being said, I would like to remind everyone to remember our local agencies, guys. Let's not forget them. Remember, charity begins at home and spread abroad. So let's remember our local agencies. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
First of all, I want to thank my pastor Reverend Travis Dentson and his wife, Mrs. Bernita Dentson, for being here. Had an opportunity to represent the City of Longview at the tempo meeting this past week. I'm happy to report that our ridership is up for Amtrak, we are at the top, as well as revenue. We always like that word. Those are two good things, and it's a testament to what we've done at the multi-modal facility here in Longview. I think I have a couple of things to piggyback on council member Snoddy's comments. We were at a meeting, and there was a United Community Harvey Relief Drive that continues to take place, the last day for donations is September the 16th. Mount Calvary Baptist Church has been gracious enough to open their doors, so if you have anything, please take those items there. Boss Crane will be delivering those items to those who have been affected, specifically outside of the Houston area, but more along the Port Arthur, that area of Beaumont. And the Longview Metro Chamber of Commerce Business Expo is coming up Saturday, October the 28th. If you're interested, there are a lot of opportunities to have a booth, be a vendor, there'll probably be face painting and all kinds of fun things going on. Last but not least, thank you for being my friend. I don't use that word lightly. I knew Mr. Willard before I was elected to council, and so, thank you for everything you've done in this community. Thank you for being open enough to go and get to know everybody. I think, you know, people know you, I know in my district, as well as they know me, some of them, but thank you for that. And, and again, I just say thank you for being a friend to me and a friend to this community. We will miss you.
Thank you.
Ms. Shahar.
Just my words to David, which are, you leave really big shoes to fill. We will miss you, and we all love you very much. Thank you for making me cry tonight.
Mr. Wright.
Well, David, I've worked with, worked with and for a lot of people, and I can really say that you are probably one of the best people I've ever worked with, and I think one of the greatest things you can say about you, David, is that it's never been about David, it's always been about the city, and I really appreciate that, and I want to tell you, it's been a great experience working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Purtle.
Well, I'm the youngest member on here, tenure-wise, and I heard something the other night at Mrs. Shahar's council, I mean, at her town hall meeting, that kind of struck, struck with me, and it, and it fits you really well. Don't ever bring me a problem unless you've got a solution, and every time I've brought you a problem, you've had a solution for me. You may not have always followed them, but you usually took care of me. And I'm not really sure we have to accept your resignation. You know? We might, can fight that. We can ask the man in the middle, he might not accept it. But I'm going to miss you because of that. You know, you've kind of kept me out of trouble a little bit, stick my foot in my mouth a lot. But then, on the other side of that, I want to thank Mr. Stillman for his fire department at Station 1. They brought a three-year-old boy up to the fire station and treated him like a fireman with his fireman uniform on the other day, and he has not forgot that yet, and he's back again this weekend, so he may make another trip up there. But his great-granddaddy slid down that same pole in the late 50s, early 60s, so that was pretty special. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Purtle. I have a few items. Help us plan for the future of walking and biking in Longview. We will have two open houses, September 21st at Luton University from 4:00 to 6:30 p.m., and September 22nd at Gregg County Historical Museum, and a booth at Downtown Live from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. There's also an online survey at longviewtexas.gov/walkbike. Secondly, and if you all notice, I'm reading this a little bit slower tonight because there's someone on the back row that keeps telling me every week that we have a meeting to slow down. So thank you, Ms. Mary Ann, appreciate you. It's a flapjack fundraiser breakfast at Applebee's in Longview on Saturday, September 30th from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m., benefiting Longview Paws. All proceeds go towards the animals in the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. Come join us for a delicious breakfast, including pancakes, bacon, sausage, fried red potatoes, scrambled eggs, coffee, and juices. Tickets are $10 each, can be purchased at Applebee's, the LACAC located at 303 H.C. Mosley Parkway, 75604, or online at www.longviewpaws.org. Donate via PayPal, and we'll make your, we'll mail your tickets. Good food, good cause. The 2017 State of the City address will be Wednesday, September 27th at 11:30 at Pinecrest Country Club. I hope you'll be able to attend that. I look forward to that time where I get to visit with the community about where the city has been and where it's going, and I look forward to that event, I hope you'll join me that night, that day. Not able to attend, it will broadcast later that week on, on air or online at longviewtexas.gov/cityview. The Veterans Plaza Tea- The Veterans Plaza Teak Park can, can please use your help, help honor a veteran. It's easy to donate. Go to www.vetplaza.org. I want to take a minute to congratulate Ms. Julie Woods. If you look up there, Julie was recently named as the 2017 Outstanding Young Alumni by the Stephen F. Foster State University Alumni Association. Julie, congratulations. Please stand, she's in our audience tonight. Axum Jacks, that's my alma mater. I was able to attend that function, and it was very encouraging to see Julie represent not only Stephen F. Foster, but represent Longview in the way that she does and the way she always has. So thank you, Julie, congratulations for your award. Upcoming events, there are several upcoming events throughout the Longview community. Downtown Live, Friday, September 15th, features Shine Box. On September 22nd, we have King Richard and the Bible Boys, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Heritage Plaza. I don't know if you were able to go out there last weekend, but I heard it was a fantastic event, and I look forward to this next coming weeks. Home Beer Fest 2017 is Saturday, September 16th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Heritage Plaza. Live music, food trucks, and local craft beer. That ought to be a lot of fun. Landmarks of Longview, an annual architectural home tour, will be Saturday and Sunday, September 16th and 17th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Make plans to attend that. It's a wonderful thing to go out and see some of these historic homes. One of those homes is kind of familiar to me.
Really?
The one on the top left was my original house. Yeah. We built that house in 1995, and now the German Wall is on that house, and they're going to have it on the tour, and you'll enjoy going in. It's, it's patterned after a house on Swiss Avenue in Dallas, and that's an historic history, or Swiss Avenue. East Texas Walk-in Alzheimer's is Saturday, September 23rd, at 7:30 a.m. at Heritage Plaza. Come out and join that. That's a, that's a difficult disease, and we need to, we need to be aware, and we need to take action to try to come up with a way, way to stop this disease. It's, it's one of the worst there is. So we need to be, be, be a part of that and be supportive of that, that organization. For information on any of these events, please check out the calendar and visit longviewtexas.com to learn more. I want to take a few minutes, okay? I'll get that in just a minute. I first want to say, I want to thank personally the Longview community and all the people who had an outpouring of support for the Harvey hurricane victims. We stepped up as a community, we stepped up as a state, we stepped up as a country to show what you do for your friends and your neighbors. And I'm very proud of our community, the people that spent time and effort to help those that need help. And, and I'm proud to say that our community really stood out. I want to thank our former mayor, Representative J. Dean. He did a great job of organizing and taking a part in this as well, and I appreciate his efforts to help this, this relief program that took place in our community. So thank you to all those that took, that took part in this, and appreciate your support, because, because one day that could be us that needs the help, and we'll sure hope someone supports us like we supported them. So it can always be you. Don't ever forget that. I also want to take just a minute to just thank Mr. Pirtle tonight for meeting with the Pine Tree ISD and some concerned citizens about West Longview and some things that have been going on in that area. And it's a difficult situation when we have businesses move from one part of town to another. But Mr. Pirtle has tried to bridge that gap and let the citizens know that we do everything we can as a city to maintain business in Longview. And we don't get to choose where businesses come, but we sure get to choose how we treat them if they want to come. And we want to keep them here, whatever we can do. And I appreciate Mr. Willard, Mr. Moore, and Steve for taking the time to meet with those individuals where there are real legitimate concerns. And we'll do everything we can to try to address those concerns as a council and as a city, and try to maintain all parts of Longview, because once again, we all have been the same way since I became in this seat. We are one Longview, and we'll continue to be that way, to support each other and support all areas of town that need our, our assistance. So thank you all for what you do and for taking the time to do that, because that's really outside of what you're elected to do, but I appreciate you taking the time, Mr. Willard, and Mr. Mansfield, who came and attended those meetings. I, I commend you all. Now, to the Go-Giver Gala. This will be honoring four individuals on January the 6th at Mont Cobb. If you'll remember, this event is being put on to help fund our initiative on homelessness, and all the proceeds will be given to that initiative. And Julie Woods is also the chair of that organization, that event. For sponsorship opportunities, please contact her or Sean, who's also helping with this in, in great ways. But tonight, I'm glad to announce our four honorees that will be the, the focus of our attention on that evening. Mr. Tim Weiss from the House of Disciples. Tim spends his life helping the homeless and the down and destitute in our community, and he deserves all the credit he gets, and he wants none of it. And so it's a pleasure to be able to honor Tim as one of our Go-Givers in our event. Our second Go-Giver is Ms. Natalie Rabikoff. Natalie has given hours and hours and hours and hours of her time throughout the years to support this community, volunteering, doing things that nobody else wants to do, being a thorn in our side at times because she's so persistent and passionate. But that's what makes a volunteer and a Go-Giver who they are. And we appreciate Ms. Natalie, and we look forward to honoring her at that Go-Giver event as well. Our third Honoree is Tom and Jill Chin. Obviously, the Chins have stepped up and really put their money where their mouth is, and they have helped our community in ways that we could never repay them, in ways that will save lives and save, just, just a gift that we can't say thank you enough for. So we're going to honor the Chins because of their generosity and all they've done for our community. And our fourth Go-Giver is Neil McCoy. Neil's out of town, so I did the best I could. Yeah. I have a few of our pictures of me and Neil on that little paper, but I won't show those. Neil, obviously through his angel network, gives and gives and gives back to this community. And, you know, he doesn't have to. He's got so much going on, and he's so busy, and he's so nationally known. But he spends his time and his money and his hard-earned efforts in our community, and he deserves to be recognized as a great Go-Giver of our community. So those are our four honorees for our event on January the 6th. I think it's going to be a wonderful night. I hope you all will attend, and I hope you'll spend some time getting your friends to attend with you. So sponsorships are available. We look forward to that event and raising money for our homeless population. Survey time? Okay. We're going to kind of do a little different this night, tonight, before I give you the results. Have you ever eaten from a food truck in Longview? In Longview. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Snoddy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Yes.
No?
Seriously? Are you for real?
Wow. We're going to change that, aren't we now? That's pretty, hey, hey, but let me tell you what.
I'm open tonight.
Let me tell you, that, that's, that's not indicative of our survey. This surprised me. 51% yes, 49% no. So a lot of people have not taken the opportunity to imbibe in our food truck industry yet. And so maybe with our new regulations we've just passed, may make it easier for people to give that a shot and see how they like it. So there's, we have room for improvement here, which is great. Okay, our next one. If you could have only one item as an accessory to a bowl of chili, which would it be?
Cheese.
Friedo.
Well, I'm, I'm shocked on this one.
I want a Frito.
Cheese. 47%. Really? Okay. Fritos, 21%. Cornbread, 6%. Onions. No, cornbread, 15%. Onion, 6%. Rice, 2%. What's wrong with you people? Rice is what chili is all about. Are you kidding me? Rice. Okay. If you've never had rice in a bowl of chili, you don't know, it's like, you don't know what you're missing with the food trucks. Go put rice in your bowl of chili next time, and it'll be number one when I ask this question again next year. I can't believe it. You know what's interesting, though? In my other category, we had 9% said others, so I had to read through every one of them. Kind of interesting. The, the main one was saltine crackers, which I never thought about that. Ketchup, sour cream. How about this one? Cholula. Who puts hot sauce in chili? I don't get that one. Okay. Well, that's all about the community interest and all that, but I will not end this meeting without just saying to Mr. Willard, thank you, my friend. That's all I can say. We're adjourned.